God our Father, we thank you for this opportunity, this chance to meet in this space, to discuss the business of this historic city. I thank you that you would guide us, guide our thoughts. We were reminded of what the Apostle Paul wrote in Scripture, to let everything be done decently and in order, and we will conduct ourselves in that manner. We do pray tonight, God, for our young folks of this city, that you would guide them and lead them and give them direction. We thank you for your presence among them. In your son Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Our clear allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Next item on the agenda is the reading and approval of the minutes from June 27, 2022.
May I make a motion in dispense with the reading of the minutes of June 27, and ask that they be adopted if no corrections. Second.
All right. Motion has been made in the second. If you adopt the minutes from our June 27 meeting, considering that there are no corrections that need to be made. Any comments or questions, Council, about this motion? Any public comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Stacy?
Who made the second?
Councilwoman Washington Eli.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. Next item, we have a special guest, Mr. Vincent Cofield, to discuss affordable housing development and housing counseling. Mr. Cofield has provided the Council and myself with some information. And since we're on record, Mr. Cofield, would you state your first and last name before you begin your presentation?
Yes, I'm Vincent Cofield, Executive Director of the Henry O. Flipper Foundation, which was created in 1989 to honor Lieutenant Henry O. Flipper, the first African American to graduate from West Point Military Academy, and the first commissioned officer of black skin in all the regular United States Army. Since that time, we've worked in the early years in some of 2019, 20, and 21 with children and youth, and we had some, a lot of push back then. Mayor Sampate was here, and we had some law firms help us, banks helped us. We were part of the Chamber of Commerce, and we were able to do some things in the summers for children, especially in the J.W. Thomas area. And for three summers with 100, 120 students, we never had one fight. So we did a pretty good thing. We fell off. I was practicing law, lost my license, went through a lot of other things. In 2017, we reorganized, and I got a couple of my members here, and we started focusing on community development. So we are now what's called the Community Housing Development Organization by HUD, which is a CHODO. And the mission of the Community Housing Development Organization is to deliver affordable housing to communities of people from low and moderate income communities. This is especially important in Natchitoches because we have three particular census tracts that impact the city of Natchitoches, being Tracks 4, 6, and 7, which are all areas of demonstrated need. This is decided by the U.S. Census Bureau and the Louisiana Housing Corporation, which is the state's housing finance agency. Also, it's backed by the Federal Homeland Bank of Dallas, which we are in collaboration with. We are here because we need financing in order for us to become HUD certified. HUD requires that in order for us to be certified, we must have a paid staff. We don't have that. We have tried to go to other sources in the community, and they have not been responsive. And the needs are extremely critical here. Track 7 is where I was raised at, the Jackson Squares included in Track 7. It was once a place where there were black people who owned laundries, car shops, grocery stores, and therefore it was an area that had economic viability. All of that's gone now. And it's time that we come and appeal to the city, and the city respond, we hope, favorably. I've included in the package a number of things which explains who we are. We are also becoming a housing counseling agency. I recently passed the HUD Housing Counselor Examination back in January, and we've been working with the Louisiana Housing Corporation again to be a sub-recipient or contractee until we can become HUD certified because we, again, have to have a paid staff. And money, charitable money for some organizations is just hard to come by, and therefore we have started working with banks. I wish to thank Hancock Whitney and First Federal Bank for sponsoring us this summer in the Homeland Bank of Dallas Partnership Grant Program, PGP, and also Exchange Bank for making a contribution. And two of these mentioned banks are now reviewing the final requirement of our application that's right now before the Louisiana Housing Corporation for three affordable single-family housing projects for ownership. What comes with this, you'll find in the package, is some of the benefits include subsidization, subsidizing of the housing to make it affordable for people who otherwise couldn't afford it. So we try to bring the fruit down a little lower on the tree. One of the benefits to the community is that enhances the tax basis because now you've got new taxpayers. And we also, we are doing both new construction and rehabilitation so that we can reach a wider market because everybody, even in the low and moderate, cannot afford to own a house. So some are going to have to rent. And we are believing that there are enough vacant houses in the city and vacant lots that we can leverage the funding that we would be able to get in 12 months from both the Louisiana Housing Corporation and HUD for the housing counseling, which teaches and educates people and changes their thinking behavior about how to handle their money. In the package, you will see the flyer that suggests by HUD based upon its long history that people who receive housing counseling are able to buy their first house within one year. That's a tremendous figure because what that means is that we have a national organization backing us with the state organization, and we would hope with the city, helping and partnering with us. It is time we do something to eliminate some of the blight in Natchitoches. We have lost three, maybe 4,000 people over the last 10 years from the city. And so then we are regressing rather than progressing. And I'm hoping that I can find allies among you all in terms of providing the services that are required. With regard to our housing counseling services, we work with HUD to understand what's going on with the Community Reinvestment Act. With this Community Reinvestment Act, and it's being revamped now, and the comment period ends next month, communities like Natchitoches can find other assets directly from banks and financial institutions to assist and support community-based organizations such as HUD, to assist the state and the city in delivering services to the people that they need. One of the things that we are skilled at this point is working with Census Bureau, with Louisiana Housing Corporation, with the Federal Finance Institutions Examination Commission, with the Federal Homeland Bank of Dallas, who we hope will be with us in October to present an affordable housing program. We will talk to the mayor and the city council, the parish president, parish council. We hope all participate, some of the bankers. I have become acquainted with the financial infrastructure in Natchitoches, and we have been vetted thus far by Louisiana Housing Corporation and HUD, and we're ready to go forward. We simply cannot do so without some financing. I have submitted to you a minimal package, and if you cannot, for some reason, do all of it, we ask that you find grace to do some, and we can ask the parish for the others. But we have to have something to be able to go back and tell them, yes, we've got one paid staff. If I have to work part-time, we've got a paid staff. Since I have passed the HUD Housing Counselor Examination, I will also be operating in dual capacity as a housing developer and as a housing counselor until we can get the capacity to hire and train and recruit other people to be housing counselors because they are desperately needed. And this is, there's one in Alexandria, there's one in Shreveport, we don't have one in Natchitoches, we don't have one in Red River, we don't have one in Wind Parish, Grant, Sabine, DeSoto, Vernon. So there's a lot of need in this community and in joining communities for these types of services, affordable housing development, and housing counseling and financial literacy. So I wish that you all will be open-minded, and please help me help Natchitoches. Thank you. I'm ready to answer any questions you may have.
Have you started on any projects at all? I think you have, but I'm not sure.
Yes, ma'am. We have a mixed-site, single-family housing project already on the board. It's under preliminary review, and we are working with two of the banks to see if we can get a financing commitment letter, which is standard procedure when developers are developing projects. They get somebody to put up a commitment to finance what's called qualified loans. In this particular case, it shouldn't be difficult since the projects we have proposed will be 100% funded by the Louisiana Housing Corporation. So then therefore, that will be minimal risk, and the loans would be for six months or less, something like that.
I know it's a great need for what you're projecting to do as far as building homes for the low to moderate-income people. I hope the city, I hope the city can be of help to you in some way to get this going because I know we need housing. I got a call today about a couple that's homeless.
We work with homeless. We provide them an opportunity to transition. Also, we've been collaborating with the Natchitoches Coalition on Housing over a period, almost a year and a half. And so we're familiar with that. It's their duty to do some of the groundwork where the homeless is concerned. But we are here as a resource for the homeless to bring them into the fold and find them a place with affordable housing and get off the streets.
Right.
Again, what our approach, as HUD suggests to us in both the housing development and housing counseling, is to deal with retooling the minds of people to understand. You will see, I put in there a little page on the second page, explained the financial capability spectrum. I also have been certified as a Master Certificate in Financial Capability. We start with people at risk. That's where they're in crisis. I mean, we've got more bills than we've got answers. They're in crisis. And we take them and try to understand their psychological position and approach them in an understanding fashion and tell them you can do something about it if you're willing to change your ways. And we find, based on the data that comes from HUD, that when people are approached in an understanding capacity, they respond better. They have a tendency to be willing to make the mental and the personal sacrifices necessary to begin to prepare for ownership of a home. We also work with emergency preparedness procedures. I got a panel?
Oh, well, we do have other items, agenda items.
So, well, that's.
I know there's a question in the audience, but I wanted to allow Council, anybody from Council has additional questions, comments? No?
Okay.
All right. I do see, as far as public comments, I do see one. Mr. Stelly, will you, since we're on live recording? Yeah. Come state your first and last name and then...
No, no, I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah. So don't go far, Mr. Cofield.
Okay.
Just allow him to ask his question on the microphone, just for the record.
My name is Randy Stelly. And, Mr. Cofield, one of the biggest problems that they have in Natchitoches.
Can you exit in the mic, Mr. Stelly?
One of the biggest problems that we have in Natchitoches, we're dealing with empty lots and abandoned property, is that a lot of that property is air property. And to get clear titles to that property, for that property to be developed, is a big problem. There are nonprofit organizations that could build housing on some of this undeveloped property if they could get clear title to that property. But that has been a big problem. Do you have a component in your program that would examine these empty lots, the abandoned property, and that you could have a way of finding out who owns these properties so that you can get a clear title on?
Thank you, Brother Stelly. Yes, I do. I've been working with lawyers and with the Louisiana Housing Corporation. We took a look at what Natchitoches has done with its tax lien properties and properties that have been abandoned, and they put it under Civic Source, and Civic Source cannot give a valid title to the property. So what has happened is that we have contracted where the organization deliver what it cannot deliver. It cannot change this property back into something productive for the community. The Louisiana Legislature does provide a fast-track resolution process that takes about 90 days in order for municipalities and parishes and whatnot to publish the required documentation regarding any and everybody that has an interest in any piece of property, and give them a grace period of X, Y, Z days in which to respond by letting the court know. And after that period of time passes, the agent or lawyer on behalf of the municipality files a motion with the court saying, "We have went through the rigor of the several publications that are required. We have listed the different properties. Here in evidence is the newspaper article symbolizing the repeated advertisement." And we move that these properties be adjudicated in the name and title of the municipal organization. That having been done, we through with this airship thing. So, yes, we have, we have really studied the project. We have worked with the Louisiana Housing Corporation, which has helped us understand how to gather data and really understand what we're doing. We've worked with the Opportunity Zone people who have given us geomaps down to the street block level. We can actually zoom in on any particular address, and we can tell you what the financial environment is around there. We have an extreme corridor of Opportunity Zone right here in the city of Natchitoches. And this is important that if we are able to come up with a business plan that would draw investors and get bankers interested, we could really do some things here in Natchitoches, especially on the, not College Avenue is now called.
University.
University. I call Lee Street, Lee Street. The other people call it MLG. So, you know, I have to catch up. But the thing is, is that I have spent years being schooled by HUD. I've got certifications at the Yin Yang, including long-term affordability and rental compliance. We understand how to work with community agencies, financial institutions, governments, organizations, individuals, and families. So if that answers your question, Randy, yes. Yes, that's a solution to that.
Mayor, I do have a question. Mr. Cofield, you mentioned Shreveport and Alexandria.
They have housing counseling agencies. We do not.
And is it totally independent of the city, or is it part of their?
They are nonprofit organizations, just as we are. They're nonprofit organizations, independent. They are supported by their respective cities.
They are supported by the cities.
They are. As a matter of fact, if you want to know about housing counseling agencies, you can simply Google HUD Housing Counseling Agencies, Alexandria, Louisiana, Natchitoches, Louisiana Locator. It will tell you all the housing counseling agencies in Natchitoches, in Louisiana. You will find in central North Louisiana only two.
I think.
Well, only two areas. I'm sorry, and maybe B and V.
I think that's another question. Did you have your hand up, Mr. Sias?
Yes.
Yeah.
Call Sias. Mr. Cofield, you have a tremendously idea on restructuring, rebuilding the minds of people who are homeless. Leadbetter Heights in Shreveport off Marlin Street, they call it the slum, they call it the ghetto. The city went in, refurbished all those shotgun houses in that area, turned around and sold those houses for low-income people, to low-income people. And they had a moderator over to make sure that these people complied with keeping their property up and everything else. We have, in this city alone, Baylor Heights, Breeder Town, and the square have more vacancy houses that could be renovated. If the city owns them, why tear them down, and they can be refurbished and everything else. I think it's a great idea. People in this city need a helping hand. We supposed to be the ones who in charge and supposed to be the workers and make sure that these people have proper home, children have proper education, and everything else. And when we fail our community, we fail our children, we not even worth what it is.
And that's a great idea, brother.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Sias. And I want to allow Chantrelle, if you have any remarks. And Mr. Cofield, if you would, if you don't, not pressed for time, if you will stay after the meeting, I want to talk to you about a couple of things. But I appreciate the information. Chantrelle, is there anything?
Well, that's some interesting information. I would like to speak with you more on it, especially when it comes to the adjudication portion. We've had several businesses or agencies come before us before that claim that even after going through Civic Source or other organizations, after we've made the numerous notifications about who owned property, that the adjudicated title still would not be removed, and that they were still having problems getting financing through banks and everything else. So if there is something that we can get around as far as selling properties that have adjudicated title, I would love to hear about it. I have no problem with that at all. As far as the properties that we do have, that we condemn and that we demolish, 99% of the properties that we recommend for condemnation have either been burned or beyond repair or cannot or not suitable for any type of repair for living conditions. So if there are homes that we could or use to be rehabilitated, then I'll be more than happy to turn those over to HUD or get any type of help that we can use. But unfortunately, that's not the case for a lot of the properties that we have here. Most of the properties that the city owns are vacant properties. There are no structures that the city owns at all.
I think that, are you all willing to accept vacant property, vacant land? I think you will. I believe you can do that.
Now, we do have a.
Have to get a clear title to the land, to the property.
Now, we are in the process of trying to find other ways instead of having the properties to be adjudicated by the city. There are different things that we can do, that there are different avenues that we are trying to come around to get away from that adjudicated title. Because the adjudication title does cost a lot of problems. But unfortunately, as the gentleman said earlier, I think that you said, a lot of the properties that we have here in Natchitoches are air properties. The people that, they're no longer living here are their deceased. So we do have a problem where it comes to maintaining properties yearly, daily, and every year it grows. So if there is something that we can do to help the Flipper Foundation or any other organization with housing, I want to know all about it. I mean, we have a ton of properties that the city can use for rehabilitation. We have a large need for residential life here.
Mr. Cofield, get with Ms. Chantrelle Rock, please. Get with her. Get with Ms. Rock, please. Be sure and talk with Ms. Chantrelle Rock.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay. We do have a, yeah, we can have some brief, brief comments here because we do have other agenda items. And again, Mr. Cofield, I appreciate you standing back just a little bit to talk about some things.
My concern is.
I'm sorry, Ms. McGaskey, state your first and last name.
Dorothy McGaskey, again. My question was, why this city doesn't have community development? Why we don't have community development available?
I'm sorry. Say that again.
Community development for the blighted areas. Why we don't have a program, the city of Natchitoches don't have.
Specifically, what are you, what are you thinking about?
We have a community development program to help develop the blighted areas, to help senior citizens and poor people with financial assistance with home ownership. Do you have other cities like Shreveport, Alexandria, that have community development programs that assist those people with financial resources for home ownership? And as Mr. Sias was saying, the city of community, and Shreveport, Louisiana, has a program. I'm personally aware because I had a first cousin that is a senior, and that particular program assisted her with redoing her home at no cost.
That may be something we need to look at developing, that particular.
Well, look, let me say this. Randy and I have had this discussion, I think, maybe Nicole and I as well. You have entitlement cities and non-entitlement cities. Your entitlement cities are 50,000 or greater. And so there are certain funding that comes with in Alexandria and Shreveport and cities with more than 50,000 people that may not be as easily or as readily available for municipalities with population fewer than 50,000. But there are programs that we've introduced, rolled out. I think Nicole has worked with at least two people who've kind of stayed the course with the USDA rural.
Development, yeah.
Rural development.
And I just say for the record, two, she's working with two residents. So we do have, even though we're not, we may not get the direct funding as the entitlement cities do, there are programs that we've rolled out and we're going to reemphasize, like the USDA program.
Okay.
Particularly for your senior citizens, I think, in your low income.
You and I have had a discussion about the gentleman from Pineville, Louisiana. They had a grant, a program that was available for that city, to that city, whereby they helped with financial assistance for housing for the poor and the needy. I don't recall his name, but we'll talk later.
Willie Robinson?
We can get any information. Willie?
Willie Robinson, I think.
Not Robinson. He was from Pineville.
This guy's last name Kohler or something like that?
Yes. That had a program, a grant that was available to help persons that needed financial assistance who were poor elderly to secure homes that were affordable. We'll talk. We did have that discussion. He came up and had a conversation with you about a year ago.
And I heard Ms. Nicole Gray say she's working with some people. Do you want to elaborate on what you're doing? So get to the mic and let people know what you're doing. Because I'm not aware of it myself, what you're doing. So, good. Thank you.
I'm Nicole Gray. The USDA has a single-family grant and loan program where they're assisting residents who are low-income as well as elderly ages 62 and above. I know some of y'all don't think 62 is elderly, but those are the qualifications of the program. And I have, we had a number of residents to come out to our initial meeting, I think it was in January.
I know you had one, right? Work stop.
And several of those residents have applied for the program, and I'm currently working with two of them to assist them with the application process. The challenge has been getting licensed residential contractors to participate in the program and provide those estimates and to get them to do the work. Because unfortunately, they have to foot the expenses at the beginning of the project and then be reimbursed by USDA. But it is a helpful program. It has, my understanding is it has worked for some people in the community. And you just really have to be really. And you just really have to be really specific about the information that's submitted with the loan application and make sure it's concise and complete and follow through with all of the requirements of the program. There are some other grants that I'm looking at that the city could possibly get if we're qualified to get them. A lot of these grants are competitive in nature, so it's simply about us submitting the application and being awarded the money if, you know, if there's enough for us to get it.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
You're welcome.
I think there's one more comment from Mr. Sais and then we'll move on.
Yes, I do, Carl Sais. I do understand by the USDA, I don't want to bypass. It might be good for some people, but it's not good for all people because they are dealing with the contractors and everything else. They don't want to pay the contractors and everything else. So I don't think USDA is good for a bunch of black people. And I'm just saying it and not being nothing racial or anything. If these people need help in this town, give them help. Are there USDA on the bypass? I wouldn't send anybody back there because they are not helping our people. And another thing, the city of Nagus, of Nagus saying that you got a bunch of property here and it's down here, it's our property. Didn't you all put out a list for the houses and the property that y'all were selling for five thousand? Did y'all?
You're saying do we advertise some of the homes?
Then y'all do an advertising, say that the people, when the last, a couple of meetings y'all had, we had down here and y'all talked about the property that the city have and they can sell it and be good for some people who live next door, can purchase the land next door and everything else. Do, and y'all recall that, better do recall that?
Ms. Rock did speak about that. She wants to elaborate more about it. I don't think it's up and running as of yet.
Oh, it haven't, it haven't got started yet. But y'all do have property that y'all going to sell and y'all have a lot of property that have our property to it. So have y'all determined how much property the city own in case that Mr. Kofia and them wants to come in and get some of this? If it's not our property, because it's going to be hard to do. If the city got property they can sell or whatever else, you understand what I'm saying?
We do have the adjudicated ordinance that we did pass not too long ago. There are some, some, some things that we're still trying to iron out before we actually just push it all the way through. But you're correct, there are some specifics in that ordinance that state about neighbors being next to adjudicated property. If they show proof that they've been maintaining the property, they can purchase it for a certain price. The ordinance is, it's brand new. Before we just evolve into it and really just push it out there, we want to make sure that we can answer every question and can speak truly on the process and procedures on how that ordinance will work.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sais.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, for introduction, it's Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a second, let me get to that page. Ordinance, ordinance number forty-three of two thousand twenty-two and ordinance amending ordinance number sixty-four of two thousand one by changing the zone classification of property described as lots six, six, ninety-six point four foot front, east side, Williams Ave, north by Hams, east by East, Second Street by Stroll, three fifteen Williams Avenue. And I'm going to let planning and zoning to explain a little bit more, but it's basically saying that the application got approved by Richard, Rachel, and Tim laid down to rezone the property described above for R one residential to R one residential. And Ms. Chantrell, could you explain a little bit on ordinance number forty-three of two thousand twenty-two?
So Ms. Rachel and Mr. Tim Liddy bought this property at three fifteen Williams Avenue. They've done a great job with renovating it. What they're asking is to use the home for vacation rental. So in order for that to happen, we had to give them a special exception zoning of R one with a special exception to operate a vacation rental. A vacation rental is any rental from a period of one day to thirty days or beyond that. It's not like a regular rental where you come in, you sign a lease agreement, and you stay there forever. This is just, as it says, a vacation-type rental. And this is for introduction only?
And where is it located?
Three fifteen Williams.
Three fifteen Williams Avenue.
It, and it already passed planning and zoning? Was it a unanimous vote?
It was.
So no major concerns from planning and zoning commission?
No, no one opposed the application or anything.
Comments, questions, any additional comments, questions, council?
Popular thing to do, see it all over the country.
Any public comments or questions? Okay, CNN, again, this is just introduction, so it'll be put for, put to a vote at our first, no, our last meeting in July. Moving on to ordinance number forty of two thousand twenty-two, that's Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have the document for item forty on here. It was introduced, so this is for final, so it's ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget to reflect additional revenues and expenditures. Move to adopt ordinance number forty of two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adopt this. Clarissa, any comments you can think of?
No, sir, just to reiterate that this is for capital items that would have been purchased last year, but they are back ordered due to some industry constraints. And so we're moving that money to the current year so they can continue the purchase process.
Counsel, you got any comments or questions? Any public comments or questions about this particular ordinance, ordinance number forty?
Carl Sais, hey, I just want to ask a small question. And this money that going to be moved, right?
Yes, sir, so this money was already budgeted in the previous year. So we are making the, the motion to bring that money forward to the current year so that we can purchase those same items that were previously approved.
Well, do you know how much money it actually was that you planned on moving? And what you moving it from and what you moving it to? And what it'd be actually used for?
Yes, it's going to be used for the purchase of capital assets. So we had some vehicles, additional equipment for our public works department, a utility vehicle for water and sewer, and I have my little list right here. And a ski steer for, for utilities, now utilities, public work. So just some operational equipment that, again, would have been purchased in the previous year, but it was on back order due to just the industry and the vendor constraints. But now we're just making it clear that we can purchase those items in the current year.
So the machine that Matt was talking about two months ago, about the new telegram machine that put down the new poles and everything, is that money coming out there also or that money have already been cleared?
What's the name of that?
That's that digger truck?
Oh, he can tell you.
The digger truck, the, I think it was a Ford.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's included, yes, sir.
That's included into that. Okay, all right, all right, all right.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, CNN, Mr. Sais, we've got a motion to second, so roll call vote?
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next couple items, few items are on for, well, next couple are on for introduction. And this is ordinance number forty-one, two thousand twenty-two, Councilwoman Alarge Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, this is for introductions, which is ordinance number forty-one of two thousand twenty-two, which, which is ordinance declaring certain buildings unsafe and recommending that same be demolished or put into repair to comply with the building code. Authorizing notice to be served, fixing hearing date, and appointing curator to represent absentees. Whereas the city building inspector and the director of planning and zoning have filed written reports with the city council declaring that the buildings listed below are in a dangerous and unsanitary condition, which makes them unsafe and endangering the public welfare, and recommended that said buildings be demolished or put into repair to comply with the building code. Building number one Shields, Cletus, and Tamala, relevant. Lot seven, south twenty-four feet of lot six, block C of S and P Edition, being four oh nine Martin Luther King Drive. Second one is Shields, Grant Shields and Michael Shields. Lot E, one half, lot ten and eleven, being located at nine ten West Street. Terrell Delphin Jr., which is lot northeast corner, fourth and Broad Street. Is located at eight oh one Fourth Street. The next property is Liberta Walker, care of Clarita Gay, which is lot east side Pearson Street, north by Sweat Street by Brazil, and being a portion of lots twenty-eight, block B, S and P Edition, being one fifty-three Pearson Street. Next will be Ronnie J. Lewis of Peel Box four one one Kent, Washington, which is lot eighty of one twenty East Side Pearson Street, north by Green, east by Jones, south by Jones, being located at two twenty-three Pearson Street.
I do have the pictures, Ms. Betty, I'll just wait till you finish because it did-
Oh, okay, I was wondering, they were looking at the pictures as we were talking. Frank, Frank, Frank J. and Eddie T. Raymond, one twelve twenty-three Welt Street, being lot nine, block one of Labor Subdivision, Breeder Property, fifteen thirty-nine Stella Street. Braxton Rental LOC, six seven two Abbey Drive, lots five and six of Peoples Subdivision, which is located at twelve oh three Rust Bowl Street. And Denise Colbert, five, who lives at five ten West eighty-second Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, which is lot fifty of, located at seven twenty-nine Salim Street. And this is for introduction only.
It, yeah, Ms. Chantrell.
So we actually had eight properties listed for condemnation for tonight. Unfortunately, we kind of had some difficulties connecting, but we do have the pictures and I want to let you know that of the three, eight properties, we do have two properties that actually pulled permits and one property was actually boarded up. So what I want to start with is four oh nine Martin Luther King Jr. This structure actually burned, but if you actually go by M O K. right now, I think they have it pretty much cleaned up already. I want to get back to the beginning, it's just trailers that burned right by the water tower.
Right.
So they, they've gotten it down, they, they're gradually picking up. So they actually pulled a permit to take care of what they were doing there. I'm not sure if it was an electrical fire or what really happened there. But it's, it's pretty much gone. So this is the type of stuff that we actually condemn. If it's a structure that could be saved, we would recommend that they either board it up or pull a permit to be repaired. But as you can see in this picture, you can't save that. That's beyond repair. So this is the inside of it, so I tried to get as much, as many pictures as possible so that you can see the depths of what we deal with when it comes to condemnations. And that's the beginning of the picture. So our next picture is two twenty-three Pearson Street. This house, that tree was actually struck by lightning three times, it split. But as you can see, the grass is heavily overgrown. The backside of the house is pretty much gone. So we're recommending that this house be condemned. Last year, we actually had to deal with the property owner about cleaning the structure. Again, we had a storm to come through and it pretty much took off the back part of the house. Unfortunately, we really couldn't get in the backyard, like talking about, I don't think, because it is so overgrown and I didn't want to be bit by snakes or anything. So I got what I could get and I hope you can see what kind of picture we have here. That's from across the street in the back. The next one that we have, one fifty-three Pearson is right down the street. They have boarded it up here. The pictures that we had before shown that it had a tremendous amount of overgrowth, but they have boarded this property up and they have cleaned it. So this is one structure, I would not recommend that it actually be demolished. According to our building official, it could be saved. It will take quite a bit of work and quite a bit of money due to the cost of wood and things of that nature. So before they would actually take this type of house and try to renovate it, I would seriously recommend that they take all precautions there.
Ms. Chantrell?
Yes.
That property that you're speaking of, the lady, Ms. Liberta Walker, she is deceased.
She is.
But I had an opportunity to talk to the cousin, Ms. Gray, and they do have plans to try to rehab that property.
Right, right. So that's why we allowed them to go ahead and do a board up. What we do recommend for any condemnation, we'll bring it before city council and we'll say, this is where we've gotten to. Believe me when I say we've exhausted every measure of reaching out to homeowners, property owners, telling them about the condition of their property, bringing it to city council for a condemnation as a last resort. That is just to force people to try to come in and take care of their properties. After that, if they don't, then we'll take the next step necessary to condemn it or board it up or do whatever we deem necessary from the city's perspective. One we have is seven twenty-nine Salim Street. This is the way a roof looks on this particular house. It caved in. We tried to speak with the young lady about taking care of the house. As you can see, this house is beyond repair. The roof itself, that's going to be over twenty-something thousand and it may not even support the structure that's there. So this is not a home that we would actually recommend for anybody to try to rehabilitate or make livable.
Have you got estimates? You said twenty thousand dollars, so you've got estimates?
This is just because of, because of what we do on a daily basis, we work with contractors. They pull permits and we see what the cost would be for any type of renovation, whether it be for a roof replacement, for siding, or any type of construction. So I was given an estimate or a guess of how much it would be for something of that magnitude. That's again on the backside. And that's the rear of the property. Eight oh four Fourth Street, Ms. Lillian, their house burned. She has pulled a permit for this. The gentleman that they're working with, they're actually on a backlog, but she has paid for a permit. We're just waiting for them to get started. And this is what it looks like from the inside. So that's, it's a total loss on that one. I think we had nine, nine ten West Street was one. As you can see, the house has a, it's collapsing on the ceiling. If you look, just looking at the house, you would think that this is repairable, but it's actually very unsafe. That roof is collapsing in. I don't know how much of the back I was able to get. This was an electrical fire. I'm not sure how much work anybody would want to put into trying to renovate something like that.
It looks fairly good.
Fairly new, yeah. They did some work, they did some work to the house. I don't think I was able to get the pictures on the backside of the roof, though. This is the back on the, from where it started on the top. That's a better picture.
You said it was burned?
It did burn.
An electrical fire.
Fifteen twenty-nine Stella. This old trailer has been sitting there for years. It was open at one time. Um, and we decided to go ahead on and bring this down because of some of the neighbors that were complaining about it. This is actually next door to a mobile home park that has pretty much been abandoned. I was speaking with the mayor. We have a lot of people that are looking for a place to put a trailer because we no longer allow trailers within the city limits. But the trailer park next to this one have about six or seven trailers that are empty, that are just sitting there. And I would recommend or maybe would suggest that we reach, reach out to the homeowners of that particular mobile home park because it's already zoned for a mobile home park. To recommend maybe allowing someone to rent to individual lots to place a mobile.
Ms. Chantrell, he's present, the owner?
I went by and left my card with his wife. If he's here, I don't know him. I left the card with his wife to reach out to you. So he's here, you said?
I don't, he's not the actual owner of this one, I don't think. I think it's just a park.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll allow you to speak. Uh, just allow Chantrell to finish her presentation. And then so we'll allow you to come speak if you want to do that.
And this is the last one. This is the last pictures that we had. But I think that will be an awesome idea if that trailer park was used for what it's zoned for. And that's all the pictures that we have.
And sir, are you speaking?
Well, actually, we did have one where we have Rust Bowl Apartment Complex. Twelve oh three Rust Bowl. This is the Ark Apartments. And with this apartment complex, this is the way the people in some of those apartments were living. A lot of them did not have electricity, so they were stealing electricity. Um, some of the tenants that lived here were the ones that reached out to the city, to our department, to let us know what was actually going on in this apartment complex. Not only were they living in areas where they had the still electricity, but there was raw sewage that was running around the property. Um, the roof itself needs to be drastically overhauled. Um, and the utilities, utilities as towards electrical, plumbing, all of those things need to be brought up to code. We have notified the owner and have given him enough time to pull a permit to try to get those renovations done. Till this day, we haven't had any of that stuff done yet or completed. But it was tragically disturbing to see the way these people lived in this apartment complex. As you can see, the wiring was cut. The people that actually were able to steal power, they had to be master electricians to be able to get the electricity to this apartment complex the way that they did. There was no way that they could have just, any Joe Blow would have known to do what they did to get the power to this building. This is the facial part of that roof. It's all, it's gone. It's just deteriorated. And these are pictures from my CBO that took pictures. As you can see here, the two, um, areas on the right side were where they were actually plugging in electrical rods to steal the power. We came over one morning after one of the, uh, what do you got, meter reader supervisors went in to do a check. The rods were so hot to this box that the box was actually smoking. It was red hot. If a child would have went up to this thing, seen that red hot thing there and touched it, he would have died immediately. So that day, we shut down the power to the Ark Apartments. There were some things that he was made to do to bring the apartment up to code just to get the power back on, which by the end of the day, he did do, but it still didn't suffice with the I C C regulations for code and for, for code compliance. Here, that's actually raw sewage that's been running on the front of the building. That's cars are parked there. You have kids that were sitting there. Whenever they would flush the toilets or run water, that would actually overflow and run down the front parking lot of the building. The person that was living in this house, he got power. He had power by connecting into those wires. The day we were there, that thing was actually burning. If that building would have caught on fire, it would have been gone within a matter of seconds. Along with everybody in there, it was seven o'clock in the morning when we went there and people were asleep in that building. This roof is an indication of the water that leaked. The people that lived on the floor, on the bottom floor complained constantly. Anytime someone flushed the toilet, used the sink or used the tub, they dealt with water leaking, running from the ceiling. This is what the bathrooms look like in some of the units. In order for us to get power on, the CBO recommended, because he did not have any fire extinguishers or alarm systems in the building, while the mandates were to make sure that we had a smoke alarm in each unit before we had power turned back on, which he did do. And that was about the only thing that was done. And I think that's all we have on that for right now.
I understand. This is Mr. Michael Braxton's rental property, correct?
Yes, it is.
He used to work for the city. Okay, um, it, it is deplorable. I know, uh, I don't know how long, I know three or four years ago, it did look like this. But it's, it's really looking bad at this time. And I know he's reached out to, uh, I know I've been in contact with him. He did contact me and said that he'd spoken with you and asked for more time. No time was given to him as much time as was given to other people who have had their properties, uh, torn down. He's asking for more time. I don't know how much more time he's asking for or if it even would be allowed. This is really deplorable. I did not know this, that it looked like this. But, uh, he is aware of the people stealing electricity. As a matter of fact, Councilwoman Eli and I both rode over and we looked at the property some time back and saw how people were stealing electricity and the deplorable conditions that they were living in at the time. Like I said, I know three or four years ago, it did not look like this. So people have been living like this. Why? I don't know. But they've been living like this for some time now, so.
And Councilwoman Betty Smith, this is just, this was the last resort.
Yeah.
Utilities has been called out numerous times. Um, the fire department has been called out numerous times because of this same instance. Now, say that that day that we all came out, had we not been notified and that building would have gone up in smoke and those people would have died, the city could have been held liable for that. One of the things that we do as department heads for the city is to make sure that the city and our residents are taken care of.
Yeah, they have to be safe.
We make, we try to make sure and try to enforce that as much as possible. Unfortunately, you have a gentleman such as this who does not see the need for man making sure that the apartment complex that he's providing for these people to live in, that is not up to code. And we've given him ample amount of time. He still has time to come in and pull a permit to do what needs to be done. Several people have come in and pulled permits, but they've come in and pulled a permit not knowing exactly what they're pulling a permit for.
That they're pulling a permit?
Right.
Well, he needs to pull a permit then.
I spoke to him as well.
He needs to pull a permit and take care of it.
And that basically is the bottom line. He needs to come in, pull a permit.
Right.
Give you a plan. Uh, the electrical is a bit concerning to me. And, uh, that, I don't know who did it. But it, that should be a criminal offense.
I have a, um, let me, let me, um.
That's scary.
I like to comment on some stuff. As the city council representing District Four, I was called in several times, you know, by neighbors in that subdivision area. Mike Braxton did know who was stealing electricity. The tenants told him. This one particular person, he had allowed intimate things towards females for exchange of rent, money, all sorts of things. So the things that he's calling councilmen with saying that he did not know, those things are not true. And they still have people living in those apartment areas which doors are not locked. The neighbors are calling still and he know they're still there. So I'm not sure exactly why he's calling and stating these lies or rumors and stuff. But he do know he been called. It has a total of four residents that still live there. We have one that have a total of five kids that doesn't have anywhere to go. So it's a big issue for him to actually really pull a permit to actually really come to some solution to fix it or at least board the ones that's down on the bottom floor for their safety. And at least, you know, try to do something.
I agree with you. He should. And like I said, people living, like you said, a lady with five kids, probably because she has nowhere to go. So she's willing to live in those type of conditions because of that.
I'm not going to basically say, Mike Braxton is a good, he, he doesn't charge as much rent as some of the other landlords does. He charged a reasonable price for some of them, or he might take not rent at all, but it.
That's not, that's not livable. That's not livable at all.
But a lot of them, you know, they like to live there. You know, three hundred dollars. They might say three hundred dollars is, you know, what they like. But it does have, you know, things that are there.
Yep, um.
He needs to get a permit.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay. And I will say this, I know, um, and we do have another gentleman on, I think, property number three. Um, sir, you, did you want to speak on your property? Yes, sir. Are you, are you Mr. You're not Mr. Delphin, are you? No, which property? That's a particular number you have. Mr. Raymond? I didn't know, because when we were on that property, you indicated like you wanted to. So we, if you want to come and speak on your particular property, just ask us. We ask everybody when you come to the microphone, just state your first and last name for the record and try to speak in the mic as well.
Pearson, I'm sorry, uh, Stella, Stella, I think. Fifteen thirty-nine Stella.
What happened to this, this piece of property that I I stayed and I had to move out of there. And because when, uh, Mary Sanford was the mayor when I had it. And they agreed that they would put some pipes in that through my property. Every mayor been there hasn't put no pipes in. Let me say that. Haven't did it yet. Okay. Now the water done come down and push dirt all in there, all up close up under that house, my house. And that house there. And, and, uh, ain't nothing wrong with it, but you did just, it did a ditch. It's, this was a ditch come through there. And they ain't maintained that ditch yet. And, and Michael Braxton was there. I know everybody know Michael Braxton. He say you come and you don't come. So he hadn't, they hadn't dug the ditch through there yet. And every mayor that been there say he gonna do this, but ain't now would have tied the ditch into the next ditch over there. And all that water coming off the top of the hill, right through there, coming out the project, right down through there, right on down through, right on down through there, pushing it all down in there. And it done fill it all up. And, and, and you'd be saying, I'm gonna put money in it. Got to put money in, put glasses in the house, they tear them out and stuff like that. But you can't keep putting money into something that, uh, they said they was gonna do this, they agreed with A Hearn and all of them when all this was done. It was agreed together. Even the city bank was there. When this was agreed, they was gonna take care of that. And they hasn't took care of it yet. There's another lot right between my lot right there. The, the city said they was gonna make them clean that up. They ain't clean that up. And all I get up there, I cut all that stuff down. And vine off their lot comes spreads over to the other stuff, bushes and stuff. I get in, cook what I can. I can't keep other people's property up to try to keep mines going. And they passed it right in front of my house. If you want to go there and snap a camera, go right in front of my house. My house, I bet you from the streets, is not familiar, that guy right over across there, just a little small street. Go over there and see what you gonna find. A garbage dump. It's a garbage dump there now. People go there, dump all their garbage right out, right out in there. You can drive out and see it. And, 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 but I try to do the best I can. And it ain't but one of the house, that, that house there, and I got a house right there, one, they, one of the houses, the storm hit. Now the storm knocked, it had this particle bowl, I call it. Storm knocked one side of it off. All my inside of it are good. Yeah, I'm gonna fix it. I'm gonna fix it. My son, my grandson, he use a carbon, and, um, my other son, he use a carbon. So I'm gonna get it, but I can't depend on them to do nothing for me. I have to do what I got to do for myself. See? And I do this. I cut all my lots and everything. I keep them cut just about. Now, do you see the one they show by the house, by the back of the house, right there? All that stuff is growing from the lot over, over the next side. Coming over, I got a hurricane fence through there. It done took the hurricane fence. But they gonna come and help. They gonna make them clean it up. They ain't did that. And I'm not fussing. I'm not, I, you know, raising no, but that's what they do. And over that, uh, they came right through with a house, what you would have showed. Chasing somebody in a Cadillac car, start shooting and everything, shot windows out the car. Got out the car and left. Police didn't catch it. See, so I got a lot of, I go over there on Manel Street, the people next door. It ain't fifteen feet between the house. I had to go there and bolt, I put bolt and stuff around the window. They stood over there and shot the windows out the house next door. I can't do nothing about that. I took and put new windows in there, got Mr. Hall to put some glass in there. They out again. I had to bolt it up. See? So I, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to do what I can do. That's all I'm saying. I'm, I'm gonna get to them and I'm gonna fix it. I'm gonna fix it. I promise you that. But I will be calling every time somebody be doing something I, they ain't got no business. Then I expect for somebody to send somebody out there to do something about it.
Well, thanks a lot, Ms. Raymond. I really appreciate you keeping up. As you say, your lots.
Yeah, I'll keep it up. I promise you that.
And look, if you as well, I like to speak with you after the meeting as well, if you don't have anywhere pressing to go. Um, if not, maybe you can, we can make a connection.
Say one thing, beam them up. You, uh, uh, you the map, right? So I can come down, you all will talk to you, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anytime.
Okay.
All right? Thank you, sir. We appreciate you being here. Look, and I want to say, because this is just introduction, but I, I do, and Chantrell kind of referenced it earlier. We spent about two hours today, uh, almost three, almost three. Just driving around the city, looking at properties and looking at some of the conditions of, of some of the properties. Not just this list, but some others as well. And I will say, um, you know, because some of the ones I'm looking, I'm like, Chantrell, why we can't just go ahead and condemn these? But, um, but she does kind of look at it and if it can be sav- uh, savage, if it can be, you know, saved. And we do have a CBO as well who goes and, uh, has to inspect the property as well to see if it's structurally sound and all of that. Um, but as she, as you see, and she noted, these are ones that pretty much are beyond repair. So also what I want to do at this point, I know it's not on the agenda, uh, but I want to put something before council, if maybe next week, to really address the properties. Because one thing we have, we have them condemned, but based on our budget, we don't necessarily, we're not able necessarily just address them in terms of demolitions. And obviously, we want people who own the property to dem- uh, to demolish it because it's their, their property. And they should do, uh, that type. But you have a lot of them just stand just visible because people don't ever address it. And I know you've got a way in which you put leans, but if folks don't live here and don't have any tie to the property, it's kind of an out of sight, out of mind. And we all have to ride around and, and look at it. And maybe you can make a case that it's unsafe for our youth as well. Go and get into all kind of things if it's not boarded up and unsafe for the public. But, um, but I do want to put something before the council, look like it's going to be a pretty significant allocation. We're working on getting some numbers. Chantrell did submit something to me. But I want you very briefly to, uh, because a couple council asks about Hopeville. Could you give us just a brief deal on that? Update?
For Hopeville right now, we are actually doing an assessment, environmental assessment on the fifteenth, oh, on that property. Just to make sure there isn't any toxic material there. Uh, want to make sure there's no asbestos, no mo, or anything like that before we actually have it demolished. We're working on Mr. Ed getting R F P for bidding. Once we have that information and we have the assessment, then we can move forward with the demolition of that Hopeville Apartment Complex.
I want to ask too, why you mentioning it? The house that we went by and looked at over in East, what are you, what's going to happen with that, that property over there? Is that one that? Is that one that has to be demolished off of that, what was it, uh, that row we looked at over there? Was that one for demolition? Powhatan Avenue or something?
We looked at Henry, is it that Henry property?
Yeah, what's going on with that in East?
The four forty-six, okay. So we can't get into that house, and I'm thinking that the, what we looked at, the back part of that, I'm thinking that may be a carport or a storage area. But the house itself, until we can get inside to really see what it's like, I don't think that'd be condemned. The only thing we can do is probably clean up that back part. I don't think that house is in bad condition at all. I'm just thinking it's just a garage and a storage unit. I mean, because there's a car that's in there, and then when we went by there today, it's mostly the, the totes, the plastic totes that's in there. Once we get all of that cleaned out, then we'll be able to determine if the house is in just as bad as it's straight.
Once, when will it be done? You know, you say once, is there a timeframe?
I'm, I'm moving as fast as we can, and we haven't received our green letters back on that yet. Um, that's another thing, when we send out a letter, we have to do it certified, and we try to wait to get a response back from the homeowners before we actually move. Just to say, normally we get a green card saying that somebody received it, sometimes we get one back and sometimes we don't. And that's just a process of protecting us before we step into somebody's property.
Thank you.
Um, thank you again, Shantrell. Again, this is just for introduction, I see we have one more comment, yes, ma'am, microphone?
I, I, I was asking, because I just asked about the white, white area. Uh, I, I don't know maybe the houses that I was gonna inquire about, the, uh, burned house on Over opening road?
That's on my list.
And Lake Street?
Yeah, we actually just got the burn reports, they had to finish their investigations before we could move forward. But they were gonna be on our next list for con- condemnation. We have sent out notices, we have notified the homeowners, we just not have had a response just yet.
Okay, there's one at the end of Powell Street that's falling down. On the, uh, when you turn on Powell, it's on the left, well, there's some more on that street that look bad.
It's a lot on Powell.
Yes, and on Thomas Street, when you get to the end of, of Hedges, and you make that left on Thomas is on the right on the hill.
On the hill sitting, yeah. Is that the White House that's sitting up on the hill as you going up Thomas?
It's a couple of them.
Yeah.
Uh-huh, and one other, uh, and there's some more, but I'm just gonna ask, because I'm, I'm just remembering those in the community where I live. Um, the building across from First Baptist, uh, Church North Street, the old Katniss Building.
Yes.
Is that on your list?
It has not been yet, that's one of the ones. Well, that's more like, uh, what you gonna say?
Historical.
But the building.
It is.
Needs to be torn down.
It does, just like the one over on, what is that, Sixth Street? We have several buildings, I think it's Sixth Street. The motel. We have a lot of buildings like that, and, uh, believe me, once we get what we need, they do need to come down. But then you have people that have come up against it. So we try to, we, we'll have people that'll say.
But you have an ordinance too that's in effect that has to be enforced.
That's true.
Because you have an old building on, on, uh, Amulet Street, a two-story building, that needs to come down. And it's one on Sixth Street that's just as bad as the one on North Street.
Two on Bozeman, we have a lot, and believe me, our list, it, it, it's never ending, it's never ending.
So we, whether the people come up against it or not, it, the ordinance needs to be enforced.
And we are.
And it need to be torn down.
Right.
So that means, needs to be a concerted effort made to do that, because we're tired of the eyesore in our communities.
I understand it, Ms. McGaskin, I am pushing forward, like I said, I've been in this position little over two years now, and I think.
You have a job, it was there before you got there, I understand.
It, it's, it's not like something that can happen overnight. We do have to take the process, process, you know, the purpose of steps first.
Appreciate, appreciate your help.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's one more, uh, comment.
Y'all wanna know my name again? Carl Sias. Uh, I agree with you one ninety-five percent on these houses in this city or in the community that is not worth fixing, and ain't worth tearing down. They gonna have to be torn down and everything else. And you got people going, living in these houses, doing crack, doing drugs in these houses. Uh, and God, beyond, beyond that, we don't know. But if it's unsafe for the community and everything else, I think it need to be torn down. Um, the building that Mike Braxton owned, right there by the elderly apartment and everything, the raw sewage and everything else, that's, that's sad to see, I'm, I'm just being real with you, sad to see that we have slum lords that, who have property in this city and not going, just collecting money, and not seeing that they tenants are living like human beings supposed to live. I'm gonna bring up an issue on Carla Trelle Park. They have a lot of species, everything else on the ground floating, the sewers down there, it's bad. And I think they brought something up about it a while back. And, uh, it just came to my memory when I was sitting there, how those children have to walk through this field and this type of environment to get on the bus, to go to school and everything else. And they smelling like raw sewage. Uh, did y'all came to a conclusion about Carla Trelle Park?
We have, we have, we are actually working together, myself, utilities director, um, our CBO. We've gone down there, we've visited, we have pictures to show the sewage that's going down there, that's running freely on the property. One of our main concerns is that that sewer water can actually get in our water system and contaminate it. So we're doing all the necessary steps to make sure that we have everything that we need to go forth. We're making sure that this thing is either cleaned up or condemned. So we are moving forward with it.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you, thank you.
Are they under one ownership or it's individual?
The property is owned by one owner.
One person.
However, the trailers themselves are owned by individuals. And then some of those individuals are renting or leasing their trailers to other individuals.
And, uh, is it connected to a, an oxidation pond or?
It's one back there, it's one back there, it's oxidation pond back there.
It's one back there, but unfortunately, they're not connected to anything, that's why the sewers run.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
Some of the, some of the residences are, the plumbing is broken, so when they use their facilities, it just on the ground. But yes, the, the trailer park as a whole is connected to the city sewer, but is a, it is a private sewer system.
Okay, I was gonna ask that.
It does drain into the city sewer system.
And, uh, one more thing, over where Mr. Raymond, stay there, over there on Stella Street. Uh, the next time that it have a massive rain here, I wouldn't call it a flood, but I would like for somebody at the city to go out and just stand down under the bottom of that hill, from where his place is.
I have, I have.
And, and, and somebody, and, and what this man is getting up here talking about, that drains and everything, that house, that blue house across the street there, down underneath the hill from the church there, that water is all, all the way up to the front door and, and, and underneath the carport and everything else, and I don't know who owned the property, but uh, they, all that water, it, it just flooding there.
It has, uh, Mr. Carl Sias, on that area, I do have pictures. It have, um, down from Stella Street, not only his house floods, it has four other resident house that floods.
Well, that's the same thing he was talking about, because all that come down that hill and everything else, and it set down in that bottom.
Yeah, and I, I want to exchange contact with Mr. Raymond so we could further talk.
Well, I understand what you want to talk to Mr. Raymond about, but I was just saying about not only Mr. Raymond property, uh, where he at, because he's kind of set up on the hill, instead you go on the other side of that street where that fence he talking about, that's where the water come from his side. But down behind the church on the same street, Stella Street there.
You talking about Mandel Street?
Huh?
You talking about Mandel Street? Mandel Street?
No, I'm talking about Stella Street.
Yeah, you saying.
Right there, right there, by, by, by the church, when you go down that hill, when you get right in that flat bottom, right, and I think that's around the fifteen, hundred, hundred block.
Yeah, and it's walk over to Mandel. Yeah.
Okay, Mandel is on the other street?
Yeah, that's where it's at.
Oh, okay.
Well, thanks a lot, Ms. Sias, for bringing that to our attention. Okay, moving on, next item on the agenda is also for introduction, it's ordinance number forty-two of two thousand twenty-two, Councilman Harrington.
This is ordinance number forty-two, a bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds, series twenty-twenty-two of the City of Natchitoches, Parish of Na- Natchitoches, State of Louisiana. Prescribing the form, fixing the details, and providing for the rights of the owners thereof, awarding the sale of the bonds to the lender thereof, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. And my document is now blank for whatever reason, but I know this is concerning, um, the, uh, the railway station. My, my documents disappeared, so.
Alex, you got any comment on this?
Yeah, this is the, uh, bond ordinance, um, only for introduction. Um, at the next council meeting, the goal would be to have a bank or a financial institution listed in this document. Also listing the amount of the bond, the interest rate, and all the details of the bond. So this is basically a template until we secure the financial institution to put the primary information in it. Um, on next week, for the twenty-first, I think that's next week, um, the city goes for the state bond commission for approval for this transaction. So once the state bond commission at the Capitol approves it, then we can come back and pass this, provided we have a financial institution to provide, to lend us the, uh, not to exceed two million dollars, which you already approved for the depot.
Okay, uh, council, got any comments or questions based on what Ms. Washington stated? Okay, any public comments or questions? Again, this is on for introduction. All right. Next item on the agenda? It's on for introduction as well. And that's, um, Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number forty-four of two thousand twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Natchitoches, Louisiana to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Historic District Business Association Incorporated, providing for an automatic annual renewal, providing for advertising, further providing for severability, and further providing for a repealer and addictive, effective date of ordinance. Whereas the City of Natchitoches is a municipality located in the State of Louisiana, Parish of Natchitoches, governed under a Home Rule Charter and a Code of Ordinances adopted number five of nineteen seventy-seven. And whereas the City of Natchitoches is specifically authorized under section one point zero six of the Charter of the City of Natchitoches to provide for general welfare, safety, health, peace, and good order of the city, and further authorized in section one dot zero seven of the Charter of the City of Natchitoches to enter into joint agreements of cooperative efforts with other governmental agencies. Whereas further Historic Business, Historic District Business Association is a nonprofit Louisiana corporation that currently coordinates and manages several events in the Natchitoches Historic District, including the Festival of Light Celebration and the Antique Car Show. And whereas further, the city currently has a vacancy in its position for Main Street Director, and has determined that'll be more cost-effective to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the HDBA, wherein the HDBA will undertake and fulfill the responsibilities of a full-time Main Street Director. Whereas further, terms of the CEA, the HDBA will continue to manage and coordinate Blooming on the Bricks, Celebration on the Cane, Which Way to Main Street. Whereas further, under the terms of the CFA, the HDBA will also undertake the following responsibilities. Provide Main Street quarterly reporting, attend Main Street quarterly meetings, manage and coordinate Riverbank, Bojard, and Rental and Promotion. Coordinate with the Community Development Department and Public Works Department on all downtown events. Participate in and manage Good Day Sin Law and other radio promotions. Seek and apply for grants for additional funding, and take necessary steps to retain Main Street certification. Help in planning downtown events hosted by the soon-to-be-established Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs. Uh, example Gospel Fest, Sipp and Stroll, Explore Art, et cetera. Oversee the Miss Merry Christmas Pageant Program. Serve as appointee to the Natchitoches Historic District Development Commission. And whereas the HDBA will provide the above services through its Director of Festivals and Events. Whereas further, in exchange for the services provided by the HDBA, the city has agreed it will provide the following. Payment of fifteen thousand as an annual salary supplement to the Director of Festivals and Events. Provide furnished office space in the old Chamber Building. Continue to provide full-time staff for the Main Street offices. Reimburse expenses related to promotion of the Riverbank and Bojard Inn. Reimburse expenses related to maintaining Main Street certification. And the CEA, CEA further provides for an automatic annual extension provided that either party notifies the other in writing of its intention to terminate the agreement within thirty days of the renewal date of the cooperative endeavor agreement. And this is for introduction.
Thank you, Councilman Nielsen. Thank you, Red.
Ate a whole Snicker bar.
I think you read.
It should be read like that.
Okay, look, and, and please make sure you silence cell phones, and, uh, if you haven't done that, make sure you do that. Um, this particular piece, again, is CEA, Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between the City and Historic District Business Association, that I think originated in two thousand nineteen, somewhere around there. And, uh, these just time to renew this CEA. Uh, a couple of things are, are different from the previous one, uh, but, but I will say this. So for instance, H, uh, soon-to-be-established Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs, uh, there are a couple of other things as well. But what's really important is maintain or retain steps to Main Street certification. That was on the previous CEA, that's a really important one, especially given who we are in the City of Natchitoches. And it's, you know, it, it's something you want to make sure that somebody, uh, is doing. And Jill Leo is a particular person, I think all of us, most of us know Jill, and Jill, um, has been doing great in terms of the events there. Um, it has what the city pays, obviously, I mean, it doesn't have what HDBA pays to that salary, but it gives you a portion of what we're paying and what we're responsible for. So, um, I think it's important to, um, continue this particular CEA ultimately. There are some savings for us, because we don't have another full-time person that we're paying, uh, to do this work. HBA, HDBA, excuse me, is, you know, in terms of events downtown, Front Street, Riverbank, uh, area, they've already have had some events going on. Christmas Festival, I think is here, we see number, the number one, but also the car show, um, Blooming on the Bricks, things of that nature. All right, questions or comments, council?
Good one to continue, they do a great job.
I think we'd need to continue it, but my question, was it any way we could have hired someone part-time to work along with Jill and that salary?
Well, Jill is, she's looking for somebody right now, I think she's advertising for, this is gonna be a full-time position.
Full-time position. Yeah, I would like to see some minorities working with her in that particular area, I really would.
I agree, Councilman Lorch. Make it a little bit, Christmas festival a little bit more.
Need to be more diverse, I, I, you know, I would like to see that.
And there are a couple of people who have applied and reached out to me, so, and I'll make that note to, uh, to Jill.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
So, um, Council, um, um, Mayor, so who's doing the interview, does Jill?
Yeah, um, I don't know if Jill has reached out to anybody else in, in the city, but I know she'll do them. I won't, I don't typically take part in those interviews when, on a departmental level type of deal. But I don't know if she's reached out to you, Randy, Clarissa is technically who her person is, I don't know if y'all had conversations to Councilwoman Washington, Eli's question.
No, no, we haven't begun to conduct those, um, interviews, um, yet, so.
So, it'd be human.
Well, she hasn't reached out to me per se to, you know, engage in those, um, interviews, but I'm not opposed to that either.
Has that advertisement ended yet? I don't. Is it going today?
No, we'd never have people of color, but I like, I'd like to see it be more diverse as far as representation of the City of Natchitoches.
Okay. All right, that's from council, any public comments or questions? Again, this is just for introduction. Thank you, sir.
Um, call size again. Nineteen time, I guess, I don't know, but anyway, I want to ask a simple question. How hard is it to have a minority car show downtown in November? I'm supposed to go and have a conversation with Mr. Ferguson and a few more people that will put on the car show here in this town here, and supposed to have a meeting with him sometime next week when I give him another call back. So, is it, is it hard, is it so hard for to have a minority car show downtown in Natchitoches? If it is, I'd like to know what I need to do to get this ball rolling, to have this downtown.
Yeah, not hard, it's, you know, Jill Leo, as we're talking with this particular CEA, CEA is the person you would contact.
Who, who is that again?
Jill Leo, so you basically need an organization that's gonna plan, so she works with other organizations outside of the HDBA, uh, work, and if, you know, if you have a group who want us, you know, what you just stated, and Jill will work with you every step of the way, let you know what you need and, and the costs.
She have a number I can get in contact with her?
We'll give it to you, but she's, she's downtown on the Riverbank, right, well, just where, um, Mag- not Magaloo's, um.
Where the old convention visitors?
Yeah, the convention visitors bureau building is.
Think it's three-five-seven-twenty-seven-forty-six. Oh, Stacy got it for you, that's the number.
And she will work with you.
Oh, yeah, I just want to see, can this actually happen here in this town?
It can happen.
You know, I, you know, it's not, I, I just would like to see a different approach on things downtown and everything, and and like I say, long time liver in Natchitoches and everything else, and want to see great improvement in our community and everything else, and I'd just like to see something different.
Yeah.
See what it feel like.
And allow me to say on a smaller level, there was one, there was Sippin' Stroll, the first Saturday, first Saturday of Sippin' Stroll was the Spat Saturday, and that was a small car show. It wasn't exclusively minority, but there were a few, Ron Bolton had a vehicle there, and there were a couple other individuals as well who did. Yes, sir? Okay, three minority corners on that.
Okay.
Uh, just this Spat Saturday.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right, well, we'll see how it work out.
Thank you, sir. All righty, um, again, that's just for introduction, so, uh, moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is a resolution, and it's, uh, Resolution Sixty-two, Councilman P T.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number Sixty-two of two thousand twenty-two, a resolution appointing members to the Natchitoches Historic District Commission for the City of Natchitoches. Whereas the mayor of the City of Natchitoches has submitted the following names for appointment to the Natchitoches Historic District Commission as follows: Jared Donahoe, Dr. Virginia Crossno, Ms. Shannon, correction, Sharon Gehagan, Dr. Steve Harton, Mrs. Melissa Robinson, Ms. Marion Falter, and Drake Owens. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Natchitoches that they hereby acknowledge the appointment of the above individuals to the Natchitoches Historic District Commission, and hereby approve and consent to same. I so move that Resolution Sixty-two be adopted.
I'll say it.
All right, motion made and seconded, Shantrell, I'm gonna give you an opportunity because this is, along with planning and zoning commission, you folks might not realize it, man, I think some of you, a lot of you do, but Historic District Commission is also under Shantrell's department as a commission, so if you want to speak any way on this particular item.
Well, the other, the other thing I would say about this commission, this commission is dedicated to the preservation of our historic district. They want to make sure that we keep it up, that our historic area is what it says it is, that it keeps in line with what's required for historic preservation. That it's a great group, um, and that's all I can really say.
Okay, uh, any comments, questions, council?
No. I know they were scared, it would be second for them.
Okay, any public comments or questions? All right, seeing none, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
I want to say, I think we have some people here today with the facade grant.
Wait, no, this is not that one, but we're coming, this is the next item on the agenda. So, that motion carries, uh, with the Natchitoches Historic District Commission. Next movement, and really the next three movements, we're gonna ask for an amendment to the agenda, uh, council, if you'd be so kind to do it. Um, but the next one is a motion to amend the title for Resolution Number Sixty-three of two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Mayor, this is, um, motion to amend the title for Resolution Number Sixty-three of two thousand twenty-two. The correct title should be, the incorrect title reads, Resolution Addressing Administrative Aspects of the Natchitoches Community Alliance Foundation, Inc., DBA Natchitoches Economic Development Alliance for the Facade Grant Program for Texas Street and Washington Street Corridors. The correct title should read, Resolution Addressing Administrative Aspects of the Community Facade and Economic Enhancement Committee for the Facade Grant Program for Texas Street and Washington Street Corridors, and I move that the, uh, correct the title be accepted.
Second. All right, motion been made and seconded to amend the title for this resolution, comments, questions, council? Any public comments or questions about this particular motion, which is an amendment? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries, now moving on to Resolution Sixty-three, that's Councilwoman at large, Smith.
I'm like Eddie, mine stopped working, thank you, Dale.
You're welcome.
Resolution Number Sixty-three of two thousand twenty-two, is a resolution addressing administrative aspects of the Community Facade and Economic Enhancement Community Committee for the Facade Grant Program for Texas Street and Washington Street Corridors. Whereas on, whereas on April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, the City Council adopted Ordinance Number Twenty-eight, Zero Twenty-eight of two thousand twenty-two, approving the terms and forms of a cooperative endeavor agreement, CEA, between the City of Natchitoches and the Community Facade and Economic Enhancement Committee for a facade grant program for Texas Street and Washington Street Corridors. And whereas it is necessary to pay all administrative costs associated with the implementation of the facade grant program, and whereas administrative fees within specific limits are included in the facade grant funds and will not exceed five thousand dollars. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Natchitoches has agreed to utilize the facade grant funds to pay all administrative costs associated with the preparation and implementation of the facade grant program. I move for approvalment and adoption of Resolution Number Sixty-three of two thousand twenty-two.
I second. Motion has been made and seconded, briefly, Mr. Elton Wade, uh, could you share with us? Um, and it really states it, but as brief as you can be about this, um, why we're needing to do this?
Yes, sir, uh, Elton Wade, President of the Committee, one thing we need to make a correction on, the five thousand, is eight thousand instead of five.
Ooh.
The top of the grant is eight thousand. I think she said five in the original.
That's what was written on the paper.
Yeah, it's eight thousand, the contract that we'll put it out to the business owners, it says eight thousand.
Uh, just a correction, Mr. Wade, it's, it's, um, regarding the administrative fees that we discussed, not the, uh, grant cap. So, this is for the administrative fees that we discussed. Yes, sir, well, we, uh, approved for five thousand of the grant that was, um, given previously, which was a hundred thousand dollars. That five thousand dollars of that money could be used for any administration fee, so like the ongoing CPA fees, um, the startup fees, um, for filing the paperwork for the organization, um, opening up the bank account, things of that nature.
Sound good, great, I misunderstood. This I do understand, uh, we did have a meeting, uh, Friday past, and we have three business owners that have agreed to, uh, participate in the grant facade program, and it totaled up to about seventeen thousand dollars to begin with. So, you will see some improvement in some of the businesses on Texas Street, if you ride down there now, give us six months, it will look different. Uh, we have other business owners that agreed to, uh, look at it, and, uh, we're approaching them with the same idea of, uh, improving the front part and what you can see from the side of their businesses, uh, including the parking lots were not included in at first, but now we do have some material and stuff and things that they can do to recover the parking lots, resurface them, and stripe them. So, uh, we're looking at helping to paint, replace awnings, replace, replace, uh, broken windows, replace, uh, old tin, rusty tin. Uh, couple of weeks, maybe three or four weeks from now, when you see reds rip, you won't identify the building as it looks right now. It's gonna look a lot better when you hit that corner. So, uh, we're pushing, it's very good, uh, we're getting good responses from the, uh, business owners on Texas and Washington Street, and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you, Ms. Elton Wade, again, for your service and being willing to serve as President of this, uh, organization. Uh, you pretty much gave a really good update, but council, you got any questions, comments?
Just, I think it's wonderful, it's moving forward, and like you say, it's gonna look great once.
Sure. Mr. Wade.
Whole new look on Texas Street.
Yeah, I want to thank you all, the council, for agreeing with the CEA, and also agree, agreeing to take this money, uh, so that we can make the community look better. Uh, Mr. Size, I want you to take a ride next week and just look, and then give us about three months, take another ride.
Okay. That's what I love, man. All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Wade, public comments or questions? Okay, all right, I think we had the motion and the second, right? All right, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
Great, um, awesome, awesome, awesome. The next two, uh, pieces are related to the Love Louisiana Outdoors Grant, uh, money that we're seeking to, for improvements at Richardson Park, uh, on Lake Street predominantly, um, so we're gonna need some motions, council, respectively, two motions to amend the agenda, so, um, if we could have a motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution Number Sixty-four of two thousand twenty-two.
Mayor, I move to, I'm, may I make a motion to add Resolution Number Sixty-four of two thousand twenty-two, and Resolution Numbers, Resolution Number Sixty-four of two thousand twenty-two, which is Resolution Addressing Administrative Aspects of the Proposed Application Assistance for Grants Submitted for Funding to the Love Louisiana Outdoors Grant, I move for that to be adopted.
Mr. Stacy, what were you saying, I'm sorry?
No, that's okay.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, uh, to amend the agenda, to add Resolution Number Sixty-four, and let me just go ahead and say, oh, I think we got an email, three-thirty, four o'clock, from the state saying they needed these documents. We feel we've already submitted them, but that's why we're, I think they wanted a few updates to them as well, so, that's why we're having to amend it, okay?
And Mayor, the next one is to amend would be Resolution Number Sixty-
Well, we're gonna do those separately, right? Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna, if we could hold that, thank you again, Councilwoman Lurch, but we can hold that until we do these couple votes. So, any public comments about this? All right, uh, seeing none, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, now, we have Resolution Number Sixty-four of two thousand twenty-two, do we assign a reader?
No, we didn't assign.
Okay, how about?
I didn't even read what it was.
How about we get Councilman Harrington? Cause if I get Councilman Nielsen, he might not just mess it wrong. Go ahead, Councilman Harrington.
Yeah, I will not. Resolution Number Sixty-four of two thousand twenty-two, a resolution addressing administrative aspects of the proposed application assistance for grant submitted for funding to the Love Louisiana Outdoors Grant Program, and the purpose of the application is to seek grant funding and/or revenue for funding for redevelopment of Richardson Park on Lake Street. And this is, I'm sorry, is this a resolution? Yes, I'm sorry, uh, I move to adopt Resolution Sixty-four of two thousand twenty-two.
Second. All right, um, pretty much what Councilman Harrington stated, this one deals with the, um, administrative employees, us, the city making that very clear. Comments or questions, council? Any public comments or questions about this piece? Okay, all right, all right.
Mayor Williams, sweep back, Resolution One Ten, just to clarify, Resolution One Ten was adopted in, uh, December the twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-one, and they submitted to us this afternoon saying that we needed to include, we'll cover all administrative costs to the administrate the program should funding be awarded. So, that's the only thing we, they asked us to put in there.
I got you.
Okay.
Thanks for that clarification. Okay, we got, we got a motion and second, I believe, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries, next, uh, council, next thing I'm asking, if you'd be so kind to do it, motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution Number Sixty-five of two thousand twenty-two.
I so move that we amend the agenda to add Resolution Number Sixty-five of two thousand twenty-two.
All right, motion been made and seconded, same thing, I think very same, any information on this one, Mr. Stacy, or?
Uh, Resolution Twenty-two that was adopted March of two thousand twenty-two, they were specific with what language we used in there. We need to, we need it to add, and the city will cover all engineering costs of, of the project.
Okay.
Did I miss anything, Nicole?
And of course, Mr. Randall Smoke is gonna be, we'll get the grant, he's gonna be working with us on it. All right, qu- uh, council, any comments or questions about amending the agenda to add this piece? Any public comments? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Okay, wait, we got the, a motion to amend, so.
Who made that? I think Councilwoman at large, Smith, made the motion, who seconded that? Councilman Nielsen?
Dale, Nelson.
Okay, okay, I'm ready.
All right.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and Resolution Number Sixty-five of two thousand twenty-two, who is my person to just read the title only? Let's go, Councilman P T.
I thank you, Mayor, Resolution Number Sixty-five of two thousand twenty-two, a resolution authorizing Mayor Ronnie Williams, Jr. to hire Corrin Graff and Smoke Incorporated for application assistance for grant submitted for funding to the Love Louisiana Outdoors Grant Program. I so move that Resolution Number Sixty-five of two thousand twenty-two be adopted.
I second.
Motion made and seconded, Stacy, Mrs. Stacy basically said what needed to be stated in terms of being very specific about the engineering costs and who we would use in case we get this grant. You got any additional comments or questions, council?
I just wanted to say, whenever this park is finally done, I think somewhere at the park, it needs to have Ms. Sylvia Morrow's name, because when I was on the council, my previous term on the council, she fought for this park all the time.
It was on the closure list.
I agree.
Her name is to be on something, somewhere at the park.
Something, yeah, something in Natchitoches, that's for sure.
Think there's certainly a noble.
She worked hard in the community. Can we rename it as, uh, Sarah Morrow Parks, that regiment pork?
I don't know about the history of Mr. Richardson, but I think we can, we don't have to necessarily decide here.
In dedication of, we can do that also, probably, in dedication of.
So, we, we could think of ways to, to honor her, but I do agree with Councilman Harrington, and I think everybody else agrees with that, to honor her in some type of way. All right, any public comments or questions? All right. All right, Mrs. Stacy?
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. We have a few announcements. Of course, our next meeting is on July twenty-fifth, in just a couple weeks. We have just two more weeks of Farmer's Market. I think things have been going well there, despite the heat of late. They do have a little misty fan out there that Randy set up, that's great. But we're looking at this Saturday, One Man's Treasure, and then the final Saturday for this particular Farmer's Market season is going to be the twenty-third, and I think that thing, Steve, is the next slide, it is Farming on the Canes, okay? So again, if you haven't been participating, you know, there's some really good vendors. I make sure I see a couple there because they offer really good product, and I think a lot of people do as well, but, but again, come these next two Saturdays, or you're going to have to wait for the fall market. I think there's another one. Folk Festival, we want to announce that, sorry, it's not bigger, but July twenty-third, Folk Festival, I think it's taking place at the Northwestern State University. So this is the forty-second annual. So again, hopefully everybody would attend that. It should be on the app as well. There's something else?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, there's a community forum, and we've gotten this out to some churches. We're going to get it on our local media, if you will, but this is a swimming pool project to discuss it, to kind of lay out different examples that we've taken a look at, and certainly council want to share those with you before we get to this forum. So, yeah, so we want to talk about that and discuss it. Six-thirty in the evening, but we don't want to have a very long program for you. Just got to kind of let the sun go to sleep, okay? All right, back to school community fair. I've seen a couple of these going on, and that's great. We've kind of been working with the governor's office. I know it says L-Y-F-E, but it's really the governor's office, a lady out of the governor's office we've been working with. So there will be some, they kind of amended it somewhat, but there will be some school supplies, and there's still going to be food, inflatables, music, snow cones, all of those things, and some, like I said, school supplies as well. So that's going to be July thirty at ten to noon at City Park. And again, there are a couple others going on in the community as well. Oh, that's it? Okay, all right, great, great, great. Okey-dokey, all right. Look, we've been here a good while, and I thank you all for staying, but at this time, we'd like to hear a motion to adjourn.
So move.